This is in parcel, okay. So only these black lines are right?
Right.
So we've got to be working at 15 feet. Let's see whether this is...
But I don't know what they're...
Oh, I didn't.
It's going to be inside this square right here.
They're going to widen this to 23 and 1/2 feet, which is pretty wide.
Okay, so it's this area here, so it's...
Did most of all the stuff that everyone was complaining about.
So what, you're leaving enough of it?
Yeah, that's...
To try and...
Mm-hmm.
No, because this is the drive-in.
Yeah, I know, so then you're isolating them.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
In the fire department.
Okay.
I saw the... I noticed something. Tell me something.
Well, yeah, I suppose.
Even though they still got the basic ideas intact.
I don't understand.
But these are two different...
I understand that.
Two different ones?
Yeah.
Isn't there... They've got a...
Well, it is trying to...
Jimmy, we're ready to go.
That's why he's sitting better now because he...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming. This time, I'd like to call the January 24, 2012 Planning Board Meeting to order. The first item on our agenda are the minutes of the January 10 meeting. Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the January 10 minutes with changes by the board members.
Second.
Discussion. Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is an approval not required. Plans received between January 11 and January 24. First plan is applicant Eric Sockel and Lois Larry to convey 11,000 square feet from parcel 23 to parcel 22 located at 819 West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth. Is there someone here representing the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Steve Doyle. I'm representing both Mr. Sockel and Mr. Larry. We have two parcels here located at West Falmouth. Number 819 is an existing residence under the existing non-conforming law. It's undersized, doesn't meet the setbacks for the dwelling, and has no frontage. He's surrounded on three sides. That's an 11,000-square-foot parcel. He's surrounded on three sides by Mr. Larry's property, which is a 3-1/2-acre parcel. And they have entered into an agreement to convey an additional 11,000 square feet from the 3-1/2-acre parcel, or Parcel 1, to create a new Parcel A. And Parcel A would be conveyed to the owner of 319, Mr. Sockel.
Parcel A. You see Parcel A?
The larger parcel also does not have frontage on West Falmouth Highway.
Okay. Is there any comments or questions from the board?
What's the reason?
I'm sorry?
What's the reason for the convenience?
Just to expand his area.
Any comments from the staff?
No, sir. It's a swap of two parcels. You're adjusting some lot lines, so it doesn't pick the subdivision, so I believe it's entitled to endorsement. Approval not required.
Okay. I move it. We have a motion to accept the approval not required. Second. Second. Further discussion? Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda, approval not required, applicant Falmouth Service Center to combine two lots into one located at 611 Gifford Street. Is someone here for the applicant?
I'm Tom Bunker with BSS Design. What you have is the two lots. They were part of the service center and affordable housing project up there. And for expansion, a slight expansion of the service center, we have to combine these two lots, 1 and 2, since pretty much all of the improvements are already... or many of the improvements are already onto Lot 1 anyway. So we're just combining it into one lot to get everything onto one piece, 160,000 square feet.
It's not... Those two lots are not delineated exactly on all of our plans that are in front of us here?
Yeah.
Does everybody understand this?
It's the dotted line.
The dotted line. Former lot line. I see it. Okay, thank you.
I move it.
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments from the staff?
Not regards to the vote to endorse the plans approval not required, but I have a communication from the applicant regarding administrative matter. I have to talk to the board after your vote. Vote this, and I can ask something else.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion? Did I have a second? Okay. Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to make a request as a member of the Board of Directors of the Falmouth Service Center and their council that the planning board waive their traditional or their typical fee for the approval not required because of the commitment of the Falmouth Service Center to this community and because of their mission, which is to provide primarily food and other support to members of our community.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the fee for approval not required on this.
I'll second it.
Okay. Further discussion? The amount of that fee would be how much, Mr. Curry? Is it by square footage or...
I have no idea. I believe it's $100.
I believe it's $100.
$100, okay.
That would feed a family for a few days.
I'm sorry?
I said that would feed a family for a few days.
That would? Further discussion or questions? Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Thank you very much, sir. The next item on the agenda is a decision. The applicant is Johnson Homes Site Plan Review to construct 16 multifamily residential apartments, or townhouses, on 2.62 acres located at lots 8 and 9 County Road, North Falmouth, with associated parking, drainage, and landscaping. Before the motion is read, I would like everyone to understand, as I had to find out, that that... the number 16 is relevant to the original application. And the motion that will be presented will be numbered different from that. Would you like to read the motion?
Yeah. Sure.
Motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of the Johnson Homes Incorporated under Article 39, I guess. Site plan review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Proposed Site Plan at 107 to 111 County Road, North Falmouth, Mass. Two sheet prepared by BSS Design Incorporated, dated August 2011, revised January 20, 2012, scale 1 to 20 with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant proposes to construct 15 units of housing on 2.61 acres of business 3-zone land on County Road with the associated parking, drainage, and landscaping. Septic system is located outside of the coastal pond overlay district, and de-nitrifying system is not required. Planning Board finds that the stormwater drainage system has been designed by a registered professional engineer to accommodate runoff generated on the site. County Road is a public way and the applicant is proposing a driveway for access to site. The planning board finds that the existing driveway shall be repaved and painted, line installed 4 feet from the northern edge of pavement to denote space for pedestrian connection from the sidewalk at County Road to the residential units. Any modification to the curb cut shall require a curb opening permit from the Department of Public Works Engineering Division per Condition Number 2 below. The planning board finds that the existing driveway has a total paved width of 24.32 feet... oh, excuse me, 24.32 feet, 2 feet wider than a standard subdivision road, and that this is adequate for emergency access. The planning board further finds that the building and parking at 111 County Road currently exist on the site, and that multi-use developments are allowed and encouraged in business districts near village centers. Finally, the board finds that the use of the private driveway to accommodate direct access to nine parking spaces is reasonable and will not conflict with emergency response vehicles. The applicant has proposed to install reinforced turf turning areas to better accommodate emergency vehicle debris. Likewise, the landscaped island has been removed to ensure access to large vehicles on the site. Planning Board finds these requirements accommodate the concerns regarding access expressed by the planning board during the site plan review process. The planning board finds the lighting and landscaping plan referenced above to be adequate. The planning board finds that the project is located near the North Falmouth Village Center with many amenities within walking distance. Pedestrian access has been provided from the units to County Road. The units each have an outside patio area that can be used to store bicycle. No additional traffic mitigation will be required. The applicant should be required to submit an approval not required plan to the planning board to combine the parcels per Condition Number 3 below. Finally, the board finds that the applicant has revised the original parking lot to reduce the amount of pavement for the design review committee's referral dated October 14, 2011. Conditions: Plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to 240-183E of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Condition 2: The applicant shall obtain curb opening permit from the Department of Public Works Engineering Division to modify the existing curb cut prior to the issuance of a building permit. All work performed within the public right of way shall be conducted under the direction of the town engineer. Condition 3: Prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall submit an approval not required plan to the planning board for endorsement in order to combine the parcels into one lot. And that's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah. I have a question with one of these findings. Finally, the board finds that use of the private driveway to accommodate direct access to nine parking spaces is reasonable? I'm counting 28 parking spaces here. There are nine parking spaces down below here, but no, we're talking about a housing complex with 28 parking spaces. So maybe it would be reasonable for nine spaces, and the nine spaces are the ones for the building down below. I have a real problem with that finding.
Okay. Would you be more specific about what you're referring to, Richard? Which paragraph? What are you talking about?
1, 2, 3, the first paragraph, the last sentence in the fourth paragraph.
Okay. I see it. Thank you. Mr. Curry, is there... is that referring then to the nine existing parking places?
Correct. I'm trying to find... I'm thinking of a good word for you to substitute that. In a moment.
Okay.
If there are any other comments for that.
Why would it need to be relevant that they can get to those nine parking spaces right next to County Road? What we're talking about is 28 parking spaces up the hill. It's really a psycho... the number nine.
Yeah, I'm thinking through what Richard's comment is, and I'm sure it's addressed by the board appropriately. I think there was a concern with regards to access past these nine parking spaces. But Rich is looking at that as a reference to the 28 parking spaces and the other vicinity, so I'm thinking of some kind of alternative language for you.
Okay. All right. If you'll work on that, then we'll entertain...
I'm not going to make that finding.
Rich, excuse me. I think Mr. Curry said that he's going to look at some alternative language that addresses your comment. So I'd like him to have a moment to do that, and we'll come back to it, okay? But in the meantime, I'd like to just take other comments or questions from the board. Pat?
My comment is, with the driveway and potential stopping and/or temporary parking in that driveway that could block it... I've seen that happen before with delivery trucks. I'd like to see signs along that northerly, where the sidewalk is, that would prohibit parking in the driveway. Not these nine spaces, but prohibit parking and/or standing in that driveway, so that that is always free and open for access to the condos back up the hill or access to the other parking.
Okay. Other comments on that particular issue? And Pat, do you have a proposed language for an additional condition?
I didn't put it together, and I'm not... it should be under the... I think where it's... again, that same paragraph, I believe.
Well, I think what I'm talking about is add a condition.
Well, see, I'm not sure that it should be conditioned, because we also have findings here that say certain things about the striping or the painting of the sidewalk in. So I'm not sure the appropriate place, whether it should be under conditions. Okay, so under conditions...
You want to think about some language? And we'll go ahead.
No.
Okay. You want to do it now? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. The applicant shall post signs along the northern edge of the property somewhere in... I don't know the exact placement, in conjunction with the walkway. That shall prohibit standing and temporary parking in the driveway.
Okay.
If that's not adequate, Mr. Curry, you can correct. Okay.
Prohibit standing and parking.
In the driveway.
Okay. Okay, so that is going to be an amendment, and I take that as a motion. So I need a second for that?
I would second that. Let me just make sure we've got... The applicant shall post signs to prohibit standing traffic and parking in the driveway?
Standing and parking in the driveway.
Standing traffic and parking in the driveway.
Vehicle standing.
Okay.
Okay.
You're right, you're right. I'm just trying to write it down. Vehicle standing, traffic and parking in the driveway. Okay.
All right, so that is a motion and a second to... as an amendment. Jim?
Sorry. I'll wait till this is finished. Vote this one, then I'll get another comment.
Further discussion on the amendment? Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Further discussion and comments? Jim?
On those nine parking spaces... Brian, is there enough by the guidelines for the cars to back up without going into the driveline?
Correct.
Okay, I'm outside.
Brian, you ready?
Back to Richard's comment. I'm simply delete the words "to accommodate direct access to nine parking spaces." And the finding is that the board finds the use of the private driveway is reasonable, blah, blah, blah. So that takes away any... You're talking about the entire site.
So it will read after the change... it will read, "Finally, the board finds that the use of the private driveway is reasonable and will not conflict with emergency response vehicles." Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Richard, is that acceptable to you?
I don't agree with that. I mean, the language goes in there. I'm not... I'm going to vote against it. I don't see... I mean, I think there's great improvement up top there in terms of the spacing of the buildings. That's much better. I don't... still don't see that we've got good turning radiuses or really practical turn around for large emergency vehicles like fire trucks up there.
Well, they did add those spots. That's what one of the things that they add, so they can get in.
So, okay, in and back out. Okay.
That's what they added. And I understand that they made this 2 foot wider, the driveway going in, 2 foot wider.
Yeah.
Yeah, they eliminated it. It's better up top. I still don't like it down below. I still don't like that.
So you still have an issue with the language as changed?
Even with the signage. You know damn well, the guy from the delivery truck, the guy from UPS isn't going to pay attention to that. He's got a delivery to this business here, he's going to stop right there. Got the bid. That's just if somebody up here has made a call for a heart attack. It's a business street. It's what it is. And business streets... I work on Main Street. We have precious few residences there. Main Street and the... it's always... delivery vehicles are stopping in front of the buildings, always, all day long. It's going through a business district, through a business zone... this business zone is going through a business property. If this was all residential down here, I wouldn't have any big deal with that. But it is.
It is 24 feet wide.
All right. Other comments or questions? Doug?
I was just pointing out that 24 feet wide is pretty good width. They could go around if a truck was there.
Further comments or questions on delineating... I mean, I'm sorry, eliminating the language "to accommodate direct access to nine parking spaces"? Any further comments or questions on that? Then I want to vote on that.
We would need to make a motion on that.
Okay, go ahead.
I would make a motion that we would remove the "to accommodate direct access to nine parking spaces."
Second.
Now, further discussion? Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay. Further comments or questions to the motion... on the motion? I have one. I would like to add Condition Number 5.
4.
Now, we've already... conditions. We've already done that one, so I'm going to call mine number 5. There is a white stripe to delineate the walking area on the pavement, but there is no curb. And I spoke to Mr. Curry about it this afternoon, and I would recommend the following language to be added as a condition. The pedestrian connection shall be marked in such a way as to delineate it from the driving lane of the driveway. In other words, what I'm asking is, in addition to the white line, there'd be some kind of herringbone markings or some kind of painted delineation to keep people from driving in that lane. So that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Yes, Jim?
From... I'm asking the rest of the members of the board, from a historical perspective, is that the typical solution for this application? Is it precedent in other plans we've approved?
I don't know. Maybe Mr. Curry can comment on that. There are... when I brought it up this afternoon in a conversation with Mr. Curry, he indicated that there were... in the case where there is not a curb, that there are conditions... there is some precedent about marking walkways. Maybe Mr. Curry would comment on that.
Sure. Signs, pavement markings, you know, the uniform traffic control type of markings to delineate some sort of separation between the driveway and an area that might be utilized for pedestrians is typical crosswalks. Our typical mechanisms are used for a site plan review, which is what this is.
I have a question for the... Those nine parking spaces, are they required, are they necessary for this business development down here?
My assumption is yes.
Because one solution to my concern would be to take a couple of them, say, that's your loading area.
Well, Rich, right now, we're talking about...
Prepare to pass that.
We're talking about the sidewalk and marking the sidewalk. If you want to bring that up in addition, then that's fine, okay? Right now, we're talking about a motion that I made.
I move it.
No, it's been moved and seconded already.
Hold on.
Any further discussion? Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Now, Rich?
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Go ahead.
If we could take a couple of those spaces away, say, that's your loading area, then there's no chance, or very minimal chance, that that road would ever be blocked by a loading vehicle. Otherwise, if you've got nine cars parked there, and you're going to have clearance between the UPS truck and the rear, then he's not going to be snubbed right over there. You're going to have a blocked road. So...
I think to introduce a loading area... A loading area is 45 feet long. I don't think it's going to...
Well...
So I think you just need to vote...
Then I can't make that fine. Okay.
Vote conscience.
I just can't make that fine.
That's okay. I'm saying that's your vote. I'm not saying...
Further comments? Questions?
On plan in general?
The board. Excuse me?
On the plan in general.
Yeah, on the motion.
On the motion, the motion. Yeah. Have we received anything from the fire department? I think we talked when we reviewed this last time that there was...
We've had three meetings, conversations with the fire department. Do I have anything in writing? I have the plan changes in front of you. We've had a couple of conversations with the chief and with the deputy. As early as this morning, I checked his...
We have discussion.
In the best of all worlds, a dedicated subdivision road. But with what's here in front of you, I think the words they used were... they're on board.
My understanding that these changes with the turnaround areas that Kenny pointed out were a result of that, and in fact, as originally presented, there wasn't a lot of turnaround for larger parking. This will provide marginally adequate, and it will make it feasible. It's not what we normally would expect, which would be a dedicated exit road.
On that same question, these paved... these fortified areas here, when you look over to this plan here, it shows two large trees on either end of them. I'm wondering, has that been coordinated? That plan there, I believe what it looks like in these areas, we're calling fortified turnarounds, has two trees and two trees, and I'm just wondering how that works.
Maybe Mr. Bunker could comment on that?
Well, I think I could take a look at the plan. So...
That's true. Our plan does not indicate...
Those trees, Jim, are just off the PVC rings for the plan that you've approved. If that's the plan that's got the correct citations on it, in the motion...
The planning plan on the... on the planning plan in there, I see there's trees on the south side, the two trees, they're 18 feet apart, and on the north side, they're 20 feet apart, you know, between the trees. I think that's adequate to clearance to get one of the... you know, an ambulance or something in between them. And they're... that reinforced turf area is, I think, 40 feet deep from the... And that reinforced turf area is, I think, 40 feet deep from the pavement, 38 feet and 35 feet deep from the pavement, and a minimum of 18 feet wide. That should be adequate space. When the trees are put in, you know, they'll have lower branches, they'll have to be limbed as they grow and get bigger to keep that space open. But 18 feet wide is enough.
I have a question for you, Mr. Bunker.
Yes.
Can reinforced turf such as that be plowed?
It can be. The Woodsoil Research has, they use the same material, this is grass paved, made for growing grass on, the Woodsoil Research has what they call gravel pave, and they do plow it. They do have a little bit of trouble, you know, at the edges, sometimes it lifts the edge of it, but it can be plowed.
Okay, thank you. Further comments or questions from the board? If not, then I will call for a vote on the motion as amended. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Two opposed and abstained. Five to two in favor. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the discussion of the articles for the Springtown 2012 town meeting, business redevelopment and general residence zoning on Route 151 and 28A. Mr. Curry?
You can recall, the last time you had your meeting, that you asked the staff to send letters out to the people who live in the area for any comments with regards to a possible rezoning of Route 151 and 28A. And we have received some phone calls with regards to that proposal. And that's the article you see in front of you dated January 23rd. It should be in your package. Everybody got that?
I think it's this one here, isn't it? Oh, my gosh.
I got two comments, so it's possible.
I've got, I've got. Thank you, I've got enough.
You got enough? No public... And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, what we do typically at this point is, if there are any individuals in the audience who may want to discuss this particular rezoning with the boards, this might be an opportunity to inform me to do so. In the meantime, I can show on the screen precisely the area the board is thinking about, and precisely what the board is contemplating with this potential order.
Okay, why don't you show it first, and then we'll ask if anyone has any comments?
Just make sure every technology worked. I hope it works. It worked this afternoon.
Jim, would you kill the lights that are just above us?
It's an old computer, it's an old projector.
There you go, thank you.
Maybe a couple more.
More?
Yeah, a little more.
So, bless us. All right, so, this is the area that the board is considering with regards to this article, and this is an aerial photo, an overview of, this is the intersection of Route 151 and Nathan Ellis Highway and County Road. This is the area that is currently zoned light industrial A. This is the Silver Square Development with the deans, this is the hairdresser and nail This is the N-Star Substation, right here, and this is the laundromat, right here. The daycare center is this area, right here. And this is the office building, somewhat, manufacturers, parcel owned by, it is owned by Mr. Eric Porter. This is the pizza and office building here, or the real estate office. This is the parking lot that's utilized by Beach House and most everybody else. This is a property owned by Mr. Manazian, and this is the property owned by, this is Trubullis. And we'll start here, this is an area that we looked at back in November of 2010. At that time, you may recall, we had a proposal in front of town meeting for a discussion with regards to both sides of Nathan Ellis Highway. We were looking at some business redevelopment and some general residence on both sides of the road. And this is the map referenced in the article that you have in paragraph, right below paragraph number three. And you can see that, again, the proposal would be for the pizza store, the parking lot for business redevelopment, and then this area for general residence. The purpose of the general residence, and that little buffer that Ken talked about here, was the proximity to other houses, Sunrise Estates. And that change, that map references paragraph one in your article. This is the Silver Square, we'll block the Silver Square area. And right now, this is the reference to the map in the article for the Silver Square area. You would have the six parcels. This parcel is owned by the United States. You never know when you need a post office. But right now, it's a little landlocked parcel owned by the government. I've included it, because right now it's owned light industrial A, but I've included it for consistency's sake here. And this map references paragraph three in the article that's in front of you. The rezon to general residence, this area here, is referenced in your article with regards to paragraph two. Paragraph one, paragraph two, paragraph three. The board indicated that you wanted to be able to have a pick and choose type of format for the town meeting members. Even though this is one article, at this point, it could be separate ones. But if people want to make separate amendments on the floor at town meeting, they would be free to do so, based on the way it's structured here with the three-paragraph option. Also, paragraph four is the same we had for the 2010 November town meeting with regards to allowing professional office buildings in this general residence district, like we do on Palmer Avenue. That would be paragraph four, which you see in front of you. And in the final paragraph, you would ask, again, as we did back in November of 2010, that today, Nathan Ellis Highway, there's a 75-foot setback required. And that 75 feet is about from here to there. Makes no difference, makes no sense to rezone someone to utilize property for this type of use, and the setback is 75 feet. So paragraph five would ask the town meeting to relax that standard from Northbound Highway to Route 28. By eliminating it, and then the 25-foot setback that's standard throughout the community would then take effect. So that is what this article does. With regards to these properties, that's the article that you had at the November 2010 town meeting, just for your reading pleasure, and call what we did almost a year and a half ago. So we are essentially taking that half of that article, and then we are adding the Silver Square area. And visually, that's what this article does. And if you have any questions of me, fine. Any comments from the public, on an informal basis, recall, Mr. Chairman, this is not a hearing. So a couple of comments for the board's education, this is an article that you would propose. If you wanted to go to the warrant, again, you'll have to hold an actual public hearing. That's where the rubber will hit the road. Without our, let's see the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so that's a layout of, and the proposal for a possible zoning change that we could propose to town meeting. So I think first, I'm going to ask if the board has any questions of Mr. Curry as to how he has drafted this for us. None? Okay, then I will solicit comments from the public, keeping in mind that this is not a hearing. If you have any comments, Jermaine, to what is being proposed here, please take the podium and identify yourself, and then make your comments.
Good evening, my name is Antronik Manazian. I own 28 Nathan Ellis Highway. I've been petitioning to get a medical and professional use. The general residential, or the general residence, takes me close, but then I have to go for a special permit from the zoning board. And for that, medical use, which my intention is doctors, not clinic, then if they deny me, I have to wait two years to get that special permit. Now, the reason I am so distrusting, and I'd just like to say that, I appreciate the letter that was sent to me, asking my opinion. This right here is standing from the Cambridge Land Court. I will have a trial date on Thursday for the variance that was given to Ms. Trubullis. Now, everything I'm going to explain is all connected, and I understand each planning board, zoning board, everybody does a special thing, but decisions impact everything, so...
We're not here to listen to any definitive questions or concerns about other property owners. All we're here for is if you have something to say about your property and the zoning, that's all we really want to hear.
Right, and it is because of me that we are getting carried away. Now, let me put it to you this way, if you take a light industrial from this guy, are you going to abate him about maybe $50,000 a year in property tax? Because you've killed his property value by at least half a million.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, if you would just, please stay with your property. Please don't talk about other properties that are impacted by this. We're asking people who are impacted by this to make comments about how it will affect their properties.
Okay, now, I explain. I understand the general residence, so as I said, it takes me halfway there. And then if I have to go in front of the zoning board and they deny me and put me behind two years, well, they've already damaged me $20,000. But this is why I'm trying to explain that, why isn't the beach house included? And why would you change the setback?
I'm sorry, Mr. Manazian, you have to...
Yes, I'm talking about the setback.
...own property.
I'm talking about the setback.
Please don't talk about the beach house or anything else, just your property.
Thank you. Okay, so can I talk about the setback?
Yes, if it affects your property.
Okay, well, now, we're going to change the setback from 28A to the bridge. Well, for 28 years, 27 years, about that, everybody has to stay 75 feet back. So now, you have everybody that stayed 75 feet back, and for the sake of one property, you're going to change a certain section. Why don't you change Calca Vosa's setback to 25 feet? Why don't you change the CLSV, or Marty Cheval, New Falmouth Woods? Why don't you change them to 25 feet?
Please, your...
What about the Jensen family? Why don't you give them, the actions have ramifications.
You're not doing what I'm asking, I'm asking you to concentrate on your own property. Please acknowledge that.
Tell me that you can guarantee me medical use.
I can't guarantee you that.
Of course you can, and then if the zoning board denies me, you've damaged me again. The town of Falmouth has damaged me again, and then I have to litigate for as much as I can against the town to recover this damage.
Okay, then that's your comment about your property?
Thank you. You should be, you should be doing three properties. The beach house, my property, Maravula Trubullis, and I'm going to try and help her in the end court to solve her problem, so they'll put two telephone poles and move that wire and let her build behind it, and you don't have to change this.
May I ask Mr. Manazian a question?
Yes, Rich?
Mr. Manazian, did you not build that building that's on that lot?
No, I didn't, Mr. Alatima.
You did?
I bought it in that position, and I merely redesigned the garage and finished it to its present point.
And what was it when you bought it?
A residence.
Thank you. So it had value as a residence?
A little bit.
Well, you bought it, and it had value as a residence.
Right.
So now you're expecting us to go and completely conform to your desires, look, is it not true that, given your desire to put some kind of business in there, medical offices, this is actually an improvement on your interests, this rezoning, of what you had before? Yes or no?
Once again, I have to explain.
No, you have to explain.
The landlord, the property owner, yeah, you have to explain. The landlord, the property owner is the last in line. By the time you pay the tax, the insurance, the mortgage, the water, the sewer, you're all done. You made 2,500 bucks for the whole year.
I'm not talking about how much you made.
So everybody's telling me how much I'm going to make.
I didn't say that, I said, it's not...
Did anybody see how much I lost?
Rezoning not an improvement from where you are today?
Please.
Yes or no?
What, say that again?
Is this rezoning to GR not an improvement from where you are today? Yes or no?
Yes, but it still doesn't get those doctors in there.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other property owners that would be affected by this zoning proposal that would like to make the comment tonight? Yes, ma'am? In the back.
Susan Bauer, 82 County Road, just a quick question. I'm not quite sure how far that setback goes along Route 151.
It's a bridge.
To Route 28.
To Mashpee, this way.
To Route 28, ma'am.
Well, today it does.
To Route 28.
Okay, so...
All the way to Route 28.
All the way to Mashpee.
You know, ma'am, to Route 28, which is the overpass.
For the overpass, thank you.
The change will go to the overpass.
Are you, are you affected by this, ma'am? Are you one of the property owners that's affected here?
I think everybody in New Falmouth would be affected. I didn't understand how far it would go, and if it went all the way to Mashpee or the railroad bridge, everyone would be affected.
The old, the old, not the new.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, sir, I had someone else over here that wanted to speak first.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jeff Oppenheim, attorney here in Falmouth, historically represented Mr. and Mrs. Trubullis for this property. They've owned it for over 40 years. The town changed the zoning a number of years ago, took away a more open or less restricted... The town changed the zoning a number of years ago, took away a more open or less restrictive zoning from them. On their behalf, I went to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I got a special permit because we were not able to stay 75 feet from the setback because we have a utility easement, as Mr. Manassian indicated, that runs behind both his property and my client's property. They had not asked me specifically to speak, but since I was here on a few other matters, I think it's appropriate to tell you that this 75-foot setback for these lots, and in particular, my client's lot, you know, worked a hardship to the point that we went to the Zoning Board of Appeals and got a variance. That variance and the construction of a single-family home has not been undertaken because there is presently a lawsuit by Mr. Manassian against Mrs. Trubullis barring the construction of that structure. So I think probably the rezoning would help the situation as it relates to these particular two lots and the controversy and conflict that has arisen. Mrs. Manassian is, I believe, in her 80s. Excuse me, Mrs. Trubullis is in her 80s. They've been taxpayers, I think, for at least 40 years in our community, have not really been able to truly take advantage of the use of this property. And I think the 25-foot setback in this area, I believe, would not be adverse to development of this area of town. And I think it would be a good decision on the part of the board to recommend this to our town meeting. Thank you.
So you are advocating a 25-foot setback?
He's speaking in favor of the rezoning.
Attorney for Mr. Manassian. My name is Attorney Dave Sacco. I'm not a permanent resident here. My family has been in North Falmouth since 1931, presently own two properties in North Falmouth, very, very close to this. Without extenuating from Mr. Manassian's property, the intent of the bylaw, the 75-foot setback, was to keep the buffer zone and a walkway. Now, wouldn't that take away that safety barrier that the town meeting, and it's in the town bylaw, from that area? Because the intent of that is to have a vegetative buffer in the 75-foot setback. Would that be against the intent of the town bylaw on that particular area? Okay, so let's not talk about Mrs. Trubullis or Mr. Manassian. The question is, is that if this passes as general residential and you make it 25-feet setback, will it affect the safety and the original intent of the bylaw to keep it 75 feet and keep a buffer zone and make it safe passage for pedestrians?
All right, so I'm going to ask Mr. Curry. Just a moment, please, Rich. Mr. Curry, would you comment on that? The gentleman is saying that 75 feet is, 25 feet is not adequate for a safety buffer zone, as if I understand that correctly.
I think we're getting a little off track. I appreciate the attorney's comment. We're talking here, if I have a flaw.
Please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Pardon me.
I realize there's a current litigious situation between these two neighbors here with regards to a setback issue. Let's not get sucked into that a little bit here. Right now, we have a proposal here with regards to some use changes. The 75-foot setback was something, I believe, that had been in 1986 for the curb cut or Toria back in the day with regards to curb cuts on Route 151. In this area, when we did our research, we found several houses that were already approaching into that 75-foot setback. It's not a pedestrian-friendly street. And the nature of this area between 28A and 28 is somewhat different than the nature of the east is between 28 and the Mashpee Town Line. The design speed of the road is different. The residential character is different. So it's my opinion, looking at this perhaps, that the intent of the town meeting back in 1986, talking through this town plan, with regards to curb cuts and that higher speed, higher design speed rather than this area. So I think this is an appropriate thing to at least discuss in front of the town meeting. If you want to keep it, up there to see.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Rich?
I would like to respond. The short answer to your question is, the intent of town meeting in 1986 can certainly be changed by the intent of town meeting in 2012. And that's what we are asking town meeting to do. So the intent of town meeting in 1986 is really not relevant if today, a majority of town meeting members think otherwise what that should be.
Further comments, yes?
Understood. No, thank you. I thank the board for the time. I thank you for letting Mr. Manassian speak on it, and we'll see what the future holds, I guess. Thank you very much.
Sir, your last name is SACCO?
Sacco. S-A-C-C-O.
S-A-C-C-O. Thank you. Further comments from the public that have properties that would be affected by this proposed zoning? Mr. Manassian, something new?
It's about the setback.
On your property?
Yes.
Yes.
If you, Antrinig Manassian, 28 Nathan Ellis, if you change the setback, then I wouldn't have any trouble putting a five-bay garage right here, would I?
No.
Oh.
As long as you comply with setbacks, what would the problem be?
So it's 25.
Lot cover ratio, setbacks, all the normal.
Right, yeah, I got it. I got the space. I got the space.
You should read the zoning.
Okay, so I'm just asking. But I can fix the problem.
Wait a minute, he has.
You see, because that costs 20 grand. I keep going back to the 20 grand. I can fix the problem for my neighbor, and we don't have to change the setback.
I'm going to get you an answer, all right? Mr. Curry? Please, Rich, I have not recognized you. Mr. Curry, would you like to comment to Mr. Manassian's question about whether or not he could?
First of all, Mr. Chairman, let's not lose control of this meeting a little bit. I think that's why you're magaling. It's getting a little out of hand.
I'm using my voice.
It's only been three years, but I'm impatient.
Please.
And that's what I'm getting at, Mr. Chairman. I just need to clarify so there's no misunderstanding. A structure would have, some structure on your property would now have a 25-foot setback. Five-car garages are not allowed in any residential zone in the town. So you've got a three-car garage, but it requires a certain amount of scrutiny by the board. Just for clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And I'm afraid it's getting a little off.
Okay. We've answered your question. Mr. Manassian, to me, Mr. Manassian.
It's an occasion to oppress taxpayer.
Mr. Manassian?
Fine.
Further comments or questions from anyone who has property that would be affected by this proposed zoning? If not, thank you very much. We will then...
So with that...
We will be...
What supports pleasure for the special committee?
I am in favor of it.
I would like to make a motion that we go forward with this article as written.
All right.
And I will second that.
All right, now I have a motion and a second. Now, further discussion? Yes, Doc?
We want to revisit considering making it more than one article because that was one potential idea. That way, if people come up at town meeting and want to amend things, these could be three separate articles.
How would you break it down, Mr. Curry?
It was, can I comment? What Mr. Curry had said, it makes total sense. By breaking it down into sections one, two, three, if somebody, rather than creating three separate articles, they can say, we don't like section three since it's the newest, and they could actually scratch that and vote on the other one, two, and the rest of them. So this actually works as it is, which I was concerned about it being all one article like it could have been. This actually addresses my concerns that I had at town meeting for, if they wanted to vote down anything.
Everybody understand that? Yeah, Jim?
I think it should remain as one because one of the reasons why I'm in favor of it is because the general residential acts as a buffer to the business redevelopment. I think it's good planning to have it all together, and I don't know if I'd be favorable of it, break it up in little pieces. I like the idea that we're changing the zoning slowly as we get to an intensive intersection where business redevelopment is appropriate use. It's a new zoning we came up with in the last 10 years. I just think it's a good planning, and I think to break it up in pieces, I don't know if I'd like it.
So in other words, you're saying you don't agree with having one, two, and three sections here?
If they could pull out the general and take that away, I don't understand. I think as the intent that they could rezone, we wouldn't do the general residential. That piece could come out.
Could.
But I think it acts as a really good buffer, and to take it away is not a good thing.
It's our job to make that case.
You have a pen?
When we put in business redevelopment, the purpose was not to do little bits and pieces and call it business redevelopment. The purpose was to look at a general overall area so it would undercut the whole meaning of that zoning to break it up into little pieces. If town meeting decides that's what they want to do, they can do it. But when you take that corner, it really should be that type of thing to make it a business redevelopment. Frankly, I think the other side should be too, but that's okay. It's not here, and it was voted down last time.
Okay. I'd like to make a correction to what I just said. Now, relooking at this how it is and what Jim just said, it is written, says zone number one is the pizza place and the lot. Two is the Mr. Manassians and Mrs. Trubullis. I don't think those should be separate now that I'm looking at it. So I think we maybe, I would tend to make a motion that we renumber these and make the first couple because of that. I want the third one separate, the other side, in case somebody does not like that. That is new to town meeting. I worry about, like you said, piecemeal. Somebody could pass the pizza place getting redeveloped and not Mr. Manassian's or Mrs. Trubullis' property. How it is written now, they could say, scratch two and let's vote on one and three. And that's not how I'd like to see it happen. If we're going to rezone, I think it should be these four parcels.
Okay, so would you like to withdraw your original motion then?
I'd like to make an amendment to my original motion, or I can withdraw it and...
And make a new one. I think that would be easier.
Okay. I would like to withdraw my original motion.
Okay, now, do I have a motion?
I'd like to move that we renumber what, that these two, so that number one is the first two paragraphs. Number two is what is now number three. Number three is now what is now number four. Number four is now, we thought is now number five.
I would second that motion, Rich. You're absolutely right.
Okay. So, all right, so does everybody understand the motion?
Combining one and two.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it already.
Seconded by Mr. Fox. All right, now, further discussion. Everybody understands it?
We're combining one and two.
We're combining the, we're combining the business redevelopment for the pizza area and the parking with the general residence zoning for Mr. Manassian and Miss... Help me with...
Trubullis.
Trubullis. Okay, further discussion now on that.
My irrational side says just delete number two altogether, but my rational side says if you combine the two, that's the way, one and two, that's the way to go. So I am agreeing.
Okay, you're in agreement. Further comments then? Okay, you have that, Mr. Curry? You understand what we're doing here?
I'll review the tape.
I'll make it clear in a minute.
Okay. All right, good. All right. If no further comments, then I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. So that article will go forward, and we will have a hearing on that. Mr. Curry?
I believe it's going to be the last Tuesday in February.
The last Tuesday in February. Please remind me. My memory would never handle that.
I will, don't worry.
Last Tuesday in February. All right, the next item on the agenda.
Let's skip right to LIC mapping, Mr. Chairman. We have some folks here.
Okay, all right, we'll take LIC remapping. Mr. Curry?
As you called your last name, you're asking to contact some property owners. Current special permits for contracting yards? Yes, we had looked at the special permits that were out there. We looked at some existing industrial zones. You would ask me to write some orders, I believe, to Mr. Bowman and to Mr. Cavosa, who are here tonight, of regards to their property in a light industrial seed district that might forward to gather their thinking on the matter, and I would defer to the board and to the property owners for any kind of discussion.
Okay, great. So thank you for doing that. Any of the people that received those letters of inquiry would like to speak, please do so at this time? Or their representative.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jeff Oppenheim, attorney here in Falmouth, representing Carl Cavosa this evening, Nathan Ellis Highway LLC is the entity that owns the property up Route 151 there. And we really, we appreciate the opportunity to speak with the board informally, and I know that Carl would like to say some things, and I'm going to keep my remarks brief. Just to refresh you and some of the members who may not historically be that familiar with this bylaw, but Mr. Cavosa actually worked with this board back in the late 1990s, '97, '98, to try to develop a contractor's yard bylaw. It was the first such bylaw that our community had, and after the bylaw was voted by town meeting, he applied for, before this board, the first special permit issued under that bylaw. And it was on this site. And over the course of the several years, the permit was reviewed by the board. It was amended for various additional uses that Mr. Cavosa was seeking. Specifically, it started out with no buildings, and it evolved to have a garage, which is the large building on the end, and office located here, which has a security apartment in the basement. Otherwise, it is offices for his various corporate enterprises. It also received a special permit from our Zoning Board of Appeals for a 180-foot cell tower, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. And, you know, Mr. Cavosa's garage is where his equipment gets worked on. He has a contractor's yard where he processes loom, and he also uses the yard for his disposal business, all by, you know, a series of special permits issued by this board. So the analysis of whether the LIC zoning is an advantage for my client is, you know, we went through the process. We looked at the existing special permits. We looked at what was passed last November by town meeting. You know, could we make some suggestions to this board? Yes, and perhaps we should, just to let you know where some of the issues are. But overall, the message that we'd like to give you is that we think it would be favorable... But overall, the message that we'd like to give you is that we think it would be favorable if the planning board would seek to submit a warrant item rezoning this property to LIC. We don't quite fit into the existing bylaw. I've already mentioned the fact that we have a residential use, albeit a very small residential use. It's a studio apartment in the basement area of, it's a walkout basement of the office building. And the reason we have that is because, you know, frankly, we have lots of valuable equipment there. And there has been at various times some mischievous activity out there. And so this tends to eliminate that sort of activity. So it's been very valuable for us to have that. There is language that you used in the bylaw, in the amended bylaw, which talks about total disturbed area. I may not be quoting exactly. That language, I think, in the context of a contractor's yard, probably should be refined a little bit by this board. Because when you look at a site like this, much of this site has been disturbed. Even the front buffer has been disturbed. I mean, in a technical sense, it's now planted and it looks pretty nice in our opinion. It's a, it's a large berm. It shields, you know, the highway from this use. But, you know, my client built the berm, he planted the berm. He disturbed the land, you know. So I think in a technical sense, you might want to relook at that and talk in terms of not just disturbing, but if one disturbs the land, maybe one should have the opportunity to revegetate it, for instance, or, you know, work with the planning board, you know, on what it is that might be appropriate. For instance, there's some disturbed areas, it's just gravel. I mean, there's nothing really going on, but there's gravel there. So that's one concern. I mean, the setback is, is an improvement for us. There's a 75-foot setback presently on this site and I think the new bylaw calls for 35 feet. So that's a plus, I think, to people who are trying to run contractor's yards. You know, most of these folks have large equipment, you know, and it takes up a lot of space. And the more space that the community allows them to utilize, you know, the more efficient their business operations and the more profitable their business operations can be. You know, we appreciate that the town does not want us developing 100% of our site, but, you know, perhaps in the future, the board can look at both the issue of residential use, which is, which is not permitted under your new bylaw, and the whole issue of disturbance of the land. And how are we going to define that? Are we going to define it in a very pure sense or are we going to define it perhaps in a way that might be a little bit more liberal? Carl, I'm sure, has some other things that he might be able to say. So we appreciate very much the opportunity to comment.
My name's Carl Cabosa, I'm the owner of the site. I know Jeff talked about the setback in the front going from 75 to 35. In the 75-foot setback, I think I could park cars or something in that setback. So it really doesn't help, you know, it's not, it's not like we could change our berm or do something there that's going to create more room or more space. It's landscaped, it's there, we're really not going to move that. I think it's important, what Jeff talked about, the having a residential use. This site is not really a great residential site, but I've had an employee living in the, in the basement apartment since we built it and it's been great for that employee and it's been an asset for us also as security. So, you know, I understand the, you don't want a mixed-use type situation where somebody would come in and put in 25 apartments, but I've often thought if I built another building on the site, would I do some sort of housing, you know, for employees? And it gets to be tough in our area for entry-level employees in the $12 to $15 an hour range to find housing if they're not living with their parents. So I'd ask you to look at that. Maybe there is a special permit or something. Maybe it's something that you could, you know, come and apply for certain circumstances. You got to remember, you're taking guys that were on contractor's yards, you know, I think about Bobby's house, he lives there, you know, there's actually a residence on the property. And now you're saying, you know, light industrial, which is helpful, I think, but, you know, it's, do you want to use it for this or that? Or is there a way to kind of grandfather in the existing uses that have been there for years? I think that's my only, those are my only comments.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cabosa?
Carl, grandfathering or even doing special permits for a security or watchman's apartment makes a lot of sense. Expanding that for employee housing doesn't. That's just my view. But I certainly would see the sense, especially in a remote area like that, where, you know, you can say there's a real need to have somebody on the site. And that's, that's a no-brainer. But going beyond that, I can't see it.
Great. Pat?
I simply want to make a comment that I think it needs to be understood, that the reason for LIC is because most of our industrial land has been gobbled up by housing and we wanted to be able to preserve industrial land. I think Rich may be correct that somehow allowing a guard, a security residence, might make some sort of sense. But we don't want whatever's going to be zoned into light industrial C to ever have the possibility of condos on it.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Robert Bowman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bowman.
Robert Bowman, the pot owner on the property at 649 Brick Hill Road. As you can see, we're way set back off of Brick Hill in the back. And what you see here for the existing buildings is actually my father's residence. Here we have shopping in the office above. Basically, we are right operating now under a contractor's special permit for that we have our contractor's yard and we can have three subcontractors up there. What you're suggesting is very, you know, intriguing and inviting and we're very interested to go forward, but we also want to look at, you know, what are the complications to our specific lot? Right now, as you can see, there's residents here, there's another residence here that my brother has. This is right now another parcel. And we need to know, like, some more information on how it would be affected as far as frontage, because we have very little frontage and as you can see, it's a very big lot, it's about 12 and a half acres. This right here is about a two-acre lot. I don't know what would happen with this rezoning, if everything's classified or if there's going to be areas that we can rezone and leave residential, because obviously this is basically our family lots. One, I own this piece of property. Here, my brother owns a adjacent one. You know, there's going to be grandkids and stuff, so my father lives on a piece of property. We like the idea of light industrial, but we want to know, you know, is this like a blanket approach or do, I mean, is there going to be a chance to redevelop this area? So, you know, does my father's house become an owner-occupied unit for security? I mean, which I would be fine with. You know, or what options are we going to have? We don't want to get ourselves locked into a box, if you will. Again, you know, economically, we, you know, the light industrial is very appealing, but we also, the option of having family homes in that area is another thing that we value. So that's just kind of where we're at between that. I mean, we'd like some more time to, like, discuss maybe with the town plan and others, you know, what this is going to be and what can be done for amendments. Again, you know, grandfathering a residence is one thing, you know, how it's affected, is it a blanket zoning or is there going to be some kind of conditions that are going to be worked into these changes?
Okay. Any comments or questions for Mr. Bowman? Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
Perhaps through you to our planner, clarification of, you know, how will the town and the planning board look upon a rezoning of a parcel that had previously allowed special permit uses, like, just as an example, the security apartment? Okay? Not to dwell too much on that, but, I mean, it may be a good example. Would that mean that the light industrial's redistricting would be subject to the fact that there was a pre-existing, you know, grandfathered, however you want to put it, apartment? Or would it, would we have to conform with, you know, the letter of the current bylaw?
Mr. Curry, would you comment on that?
Well, Counsel, I think it goes back to the mag, the card of, the king shall not make a retroactive walk. If in fact a map being a rezoning occurred on Carl's property or on Mr. Bowman's property, the security apartment would technically become a pre-existing non-conforming. It'd be allowed to continue, but subject to any scrutiny by the board of appeals if you want to modify, extend, or alter. Unless, of course, an interpretation can be made that it's a, an accessory used customarily incidental thereto. So the board may want to think about, some back to the language of, perhaps, the industrial C zone that would allow for, you know, a security apartment. We do that in the marine zone. And the same logic occurred back in 1986 for that, was that it went from business zoning to marine zoning because of the development of condominiums and the waterfronts. But they did allow for security apartments. I can see that to have a very easy technical amendment here for light industrial C also. And addressing Mr. Bowman's question about, you know, of remapping, a remapping of the area might just involve the parcel that's currently subject to the special permit and leave any other parcels, you know, just as they are today. It would have to be some kind of remapping exercise here, because that's your house right there.
Yeah, there's a house. I just don't know whether the frontage is a subject, it's a very big parcel. It doesn't say how much frontage is needed, whether or not it would need to combine that other residential lot, which is a little two acres.
No, the frontages would comply with the new zone. So you wouldn't have to combine any. But, you know, obviously, there is a home there that someone resides in, there's security apartments for business reasons, so something for the board to consider before you remap anything in these two instances. Or you remap it in such a fashion, like the berm, the disturbed area, the berm could remain ag double F. And I'll figure that out. Further discussions obviously need to occur between the property and the board and I'd be happy to meet with you and further those discussions.
Yes, Rich.
Yeah, the one residence would, as Brian said, would be a prior non-conforming use and it would, in effect, serve the same purpose as a security apartment. I mean, it leaves somebody on there. But the issue would come as to any extension of that, any, you know, increase of that, that building would come out of worry, tight screw, especially any change to two-family...
You'd have to flip around a section.
Yeah, any two-family use or anything like that, so. But it would be a prior non-conforming use and it would be no problem. You wouldn't want to add those other properties to it because now you'd really be creating an anomaly that's not, it's in the spirit of the bylaw.
Okay. Further comments from the public on LIC remapping? Anyone who's, well, was, these two gentlemen were the only ones that were approached?
Yes.
Okay. And they both had a chance to speak.
Right, so if we are done with that, I can continue on the other areas of the town that we were discussing, but I think I'll get ahold of Jeff and Carl and Mr. Bowman and others and we can continue our discussions and see how far they want to go with this next town meeting or looking for...
Okay.
The only other information I have with the board tonight, I have had discussions with representatives from Mr. LaRusso. This is the, currently the area that they're utilizing for the sand and gravel operations. Just to orientate you, this is, you know, Thomas Landers Road. This is the road to the landfill. This is the landfill. And Mr. LaRusso owns this sand and gravel operation here and he has a little sand and gravel operation on the other side of the street going. They are very interested in furthering a mapping exercise. They actually found all of that land. And they would be interested in furthering discussions with the board as regards to this area for any light industrial C designation. It's outside all the resource districts, water resource, wildlife corridor. This is the area the board was focusing on to begin with. And they would be interested in coming forward with something in the near, in the near future. They are not interested at this point. We're still struggling with some of the non-conformity issues on the south side of Thomas Landers Road here. And on the north side of Thomas Landers Road, these parcels, some things fit, the batch plants don't fit. There's this town-owned land here that's landlocked. You know, we were talking about fire stations some time ago. I think we need to further this discussion. The board of selectmen, perhaps at your joint meeting, asked exactly where we're going to go with that land and some conservation land further to the north. But this is the only area at this point I think I'm focusing on on Thomas Landers Road.
Will those butters be notified of any meeting?
Hang on, forget that. If, if in fact we go forward, this would be the area to focus on. Yes, through the chairman. If you actually want to have an article, a real public hearing is held, you get a buttters with a certain distance, get a certified letter. And that's where the, like I said before, the river hits the road. But this is the area that these property owners would be interested in discussing light industrial C with the board and not those other areas we had been discussing in the past. That's just my update for the board where we stand now.
Okay.
And other areas currently on Thomas Landers Road, we're considering.
Okay.
Or I'm actively discussing anything with anyone.
So those are the...
So I'll advance the discussions with Mr. Cabosa, Mr. Bowman, and Mr. LaRusso to report back to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next, let's see. Then the multifamily use definition is the last...
My favorite.
I'm sorry?
My favorite.
Your favorite, yeah. And there's...
I tend to read and see something different.
Oh, let me see. Is there another new one here that I need to know? Is this in our packet? Because I got the old...
It's on the back.
I don't need it on the back of the other one?
You should have it on the back.
Oh, yeah. I got it, I see it, I see it.
Try to save some paper.
Have you changed it, Brian, from...
No, it's the same. I gave you back on the early, it should be a draft date, the 6th of January.
Yeah.
At 11:44 a.m.
Okay. I see it.
My passport, you can use it, please.
Let me just see here.
So this is the definition I asked the board to take a look at again. We had discussed it earlier, back around the, earlier in the month. We found some issues with it and made some changes. I had a discussion, I believe, with Aladio regarding the last paragraph. There was a concern raised by Attorney Man. I'm sorry to get back to him today about it, but I think after discussing it with the others, the language is okay with regards to the issue I raised about split zones. So this language I can recommend to the board for a hearing, for a warrant, for the special town meeting, unless you have other comments and concerns to discuss with the town.
Could you, Brian, just briefly explain what the, what the issue about the split zoning was on, I believe, paragraph number five? Is that what it was?
The language at the end of the article states that not more than one dwelling shall be erected on a single lot except for multifamily uses, as allowed for within designated zoning structures. And the worry was that... And the worry was that if I had a lot, this bit, split, say, business in front and residence in the back, that I couldn't have a multifamily use on that entire lot with this language. Because I might have, because it says not more than one per lot. But the key word is except for multifamily use as allowed for within designated zoning district. That's the key word. In the district, you can have the multifamily use. The general exception is for the entire lot in that designated zoning district. So, in the business zone districts, you can have the multifamily use. In that residence district in the back, you cannot. Let's say you had a single-family home in the residence district, you can still have two, two families up front, but you couldn't put another single family in the residence.
Okay.
I believe the language is okay with the board.
Okay, everybody got that? All right. Any comments or questions on this article as proposed by the planning board for the spring town meeting? Yes, Rich?
In light of the discussion we had on the plan that we, the site plan that we did earlier this evening, I would want to see some, maybe not here, but to, in the future, some requirement that whenever you have, let's say, more than three multifamily units, that you're going to have to have real vehicular access in and out for emergency vehicles. Real, you know, one-way in and out, or, so that you don't get into this kind of mess that we've got before. If you had a, we have a standard requirement in subdivisions, let me talk, we have a standard requirement in subdivisions that you have that. And let's say you have five buildings and five single-family homes, and you require that for five families. But now, the one we saw tonight, you had five structures, but it's 15 families. And the need for that kind of emergency access is triple what it is in an ordinary subdivision. And yet, we left that slight. And I think, if that's the bylaw allows that, the bylaw needs to be changed. That's my point.
Yes, Mr. Curry.
If in fact, in the future, you want to look at some site finding standards...
Yes.
Then that's a totally different subject.
I said that, I said that. But I, I was going to bring it up at the end, but I thought this would be a good place.
And I said my end.
Right.
Fine, but in the meantime, this article is merely designed for flexibility to the designers out there. So, we don't run into some other issues. But granted, if I had to look at site planning issues with you, that has another article on that.
Okay.
It's quite a pleasure on this.
Further comments or questions? Do we have a motion in this, in this regard?
You do not.
Just one comment.
Yes, Doug.
Would it be appropriate to include maybe an extra sentence or two with these, so town meeting people can understand it better? Because I don't think the majority of them are really going to go to the zoning book to really read it. So, they don't really understand. I guess most of this stuff passes, because they just assume it's just wording that we need.
What I try to do, Doug, is in the explanation, 25 words or less, explains.
And I guess that does work.
Is that what they give you, 25 words or less?
A former monitor indicated to me, young Mr. Curry at the time...
25 words?
Here's a hint, young Mr. Curry, 25 words or less.
Wow.
That's what I do. I try to do that. Obviously, some explanations take.
Yeah, right.
This might take a little more, very important than sometimes it gets in precinct meetings to explain. I always say so much. I always do so much warranty.
You'd go with that, Doug?
I think so.
Okay. Other comments? See, I still don't have a motion on this.
I move that we vote this article to the town meeting.
I would second.
I have a motion and second. Further discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed, I'm opposed until we get to our safeguards, and opposed to making any more flexibility than there already is in this kind of development.
Any, any extensions? So, it passes six to one. Okay.
Not opposed in principle, but just under present circumstances.
Next item on the agenda, committee reports. Anybody who is representing the planning board on another committee, or organization, or whatever, maybe the local comprehensive plan folks, would want to make a comment or not?
Yes, we've been working on the local comprehensive plan, and we have, would like to take a draft of, solicit comments again from the wastewater group. We'd like to set up a meeting with them, and be looking for your permission to have a meeting with them.
Anyone object to them meeting with them? You talking about the, the water quality management committee?
Yes, yes.
You think that's what they're called now, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, is it, if, if there's no objections, I think, go ahead.
We also want to meet with the Gary Anderson, the group with the financial...
Finance committee?
Not the finance committee, the group that...
Capital planning?
Thank you, the capital planning group, because we're attempting to write this into the local comprehensive plan, too. So, we're looking for approval from you all tonight to go ahead with that.
Any objections to that?
No.
Sounds like you have it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, uh, let me think. I have a report for, from the, as a representative to the community preservation committee. We are getting near the point where we will be developing an RFP for the housing that's going to be proposed for Spring Bar Road. So, we've been working diligently on that, and we're about ready to move that forward. And I believe we have two, possibly three articles to recommend a town meeting for financing. One is for beach nourishment, one is for the Wacoit Congregational Church, and the other is still to be determined. And that is in regards to the youth hockey program, development of their new rink. I think that covers the ones that we'll be bringing forward to town meeting within the spring, plus our own administrative budget. Okay, anybody, let's see, who else? Anything on wind turbines?
No, we're getting, we're getting the information slowly that we were looking for to help us determine the path forward on that.
You're working with Marlene on that, right?
Marlene.
Okay. And then, how about the economic...
Sustainability, we haven't...
Economic sustainability group, not, you haven't met?
We haven't met.
Okay. Anything else that I might have missed?
What about this correspondence at the back?
Um, I'm just doing, I'm just doing committee reports.
Sorry.
Okay, any more committee reports? Okay, then referrals? Do we don't have any referrals, do we, Mr. Curry?
No.
Okay. Correspondence. I have three items. A letter from Joseph Santos, owner of Connor Sport Court of New England South, regarding the definition of lot coverage by structure. Oh, boy. Okay, I think I better read this into the record here. Dear Ralph Herbst, Chairman of the Planning Board, this is from Mr. Santos. I'm writing this letter for you and your board to consider amending the bylaw, Article Four, the definition of a structure in reference to the first sentence, which states, "Structure: Anything constructed or erected to, to use of which requires fixed location on the ground or attachment or something located on the ground, including but not limited to tennis or similar sports courts, swimming pools, if not more than 24 inches deep, or 250 square feet in area, or gas or liquid storage tanks, principally above ground, but not including retaining walls or fences." So, that must be the definition of a structure as is in our bylaw now. Is that correct?
That's right.
That's what he just read. Okay. This is his proposed change. Structure: Anything constructed or erected to use of which requires fixed location on the ground or attachment to something located on the ground, including but not limited to impervious tennis. In other words, that would be a hard court tennis court versus a clay tennis court. Or similar sports courts and swimming pools of not more than 24 inches deep or 250 square feet in an area, or gas or liquid storage tanks principally, if principally above ground, but not included in retaining walls or fences. So, he's, he's adding the word impervious in front of the word tennis courts.
Because...
And the reason is, impervious definition means impervious, not allowing fluid to pass through, an impervious layer of ballistic basaltic clay. Hmm, I'm not just sure what he's trying to get at here.
Back at you.
Maybe you can.
This gentleman is in the tennis court construction business.
Right.
He's looking to bring an amendment to the zoning bylaw more in line of lot coverage than definition of structure.
Yeah.
Because in certain instances, we've allowed pervious pavement in parking lots not to count towards lot coverage. And right now, it's something that's really not well-defined in the zoning bylaw. Jack in the Beanstalk up by the high school, I think there was a issue with regards to the water resource district. Lot coverage, but they brought this pervious pavement in, and so they were allowed to proceed. I think he's looking for some, that type of relief regards to lot coverage, and that really was the definition of a structure.
Right.
But we had, I had a discussion with the gentleman, and he asked, said the best thing to do is write a letter to the board, and after we close out this warrant, and sometime in May, we'll get into, you know, what do you want to bring to the next town meeting, I can bring that up again.
Okay, fine. I am just, just let me finish this. Reason for the request to change the proposal. Currently, most courts are either asphalt or concrete courts that are impervious, and when a resident is looking to put in a court, their court is looked at as...
Lot coverage?
As though it was a building, and all requirements, such as lot coverage restrictions, setbacks, et cetera, are required. Currently, a lot coverage restrictions are 20% for residential lots and 25% on Board of Appeals approval. Also, six towns on the Cape consider game courts to be a structure, but are not considered in lot coverage. But if a resident wants to build a pervious base court, such as grass, stone dust, clay, is not considered a structure where a permit is required, and is not required to pull a permit to construct. So, by adding impervious to the above, would make the bylaw more specific to the current bylaw, and for the building department to use in taking into consideration of any new developments, such as a sport-based pervious concrete, as a use for construction of tennis and other multiple sport game courts. So, respectfully, Mr. Joseph Santos, so that's something that we can consider for an amendment to our bylaws for town meeting. Yes, Rich?
He wants to specifically allow pervious sporting courts. Am I correct? Not impervious.
It says, "Including but not limited to impervious." Right.
Oh, he wants impervious.
Right, yes. Including but not limited to impervious.
No, I think the same reasoning that does not allow impervious parking would apply to this. I mean, it says, I mean, I don't mind the setbacks issue, but if we're talking about water resource protection, which, well, then that's a different question. So...
Well, I wouldn't struggle over if I didn't...
The semantic.
We can revisit this. It's a, it's a request, petition that's come to you from the correspondence, and I'll bring it back to the board, and you can put a priority on it, the staff to look at for you, if you think it's a worth it.
Okay.
When I was a kid, all the public courts in Falmouth were clay.
Oh, yeah.
They were all clay, and we kids that worked for the park department every summer learned how to use grading rake. All the infield's were clay, too, all the little league infield, everything. It's a joke.
You were a chosen few, Rich. All right. The next piece of correspondence is a letter from Ms. Triboulis, Nathan Allen, Nathan Allen Highway, which we discussed tonight briefly, her lot. Dear Mr. Herbst, I am the owner of the lot known as Zero Nathan Ellis Highway Lot Two. I'm writing in response to your recent letter stating the consideration for a possible zoning change near the corner of North Falmouth Highway and Nathan Ellis Highway. I would like to state my position regarding the potential rezoning of the general residence district to my property. As stated in the past, I am, I am in agreement with the proposed zoning changes. I am deeply in favor with the proposed zoning changes that the planning board presented to the town meeting last November 2010. The past proposed amendment would rezone my property from single residence B to general residence. Changing the premises to a general residence zoning, along with the proposed setback from 75 feet to 25 feet, town standard, for the area is a thoughtful and workable solution for the area of Route 151, and would facilitate reasonable development. The proposed changes that were brought forth by the planning board would also allow for professional officers and obvious benefit to my adjacent neighbor, Mr. Menezian. He has petitioned for this change for many years in order to pursue the development of medical offices. His property has remained unfinished for several years. I also would like to mention that my neighbor, Mr. Menezian, is in litigation with me and the town of Falmouth regarding a variance with the Falmouth zoning board granting, granted, allowing construction of a structure on my lot within the setback. Thank you for your consideration and hoping for your support in this matter. Sincerely, Marigula Triboulis. The last bit of correspondence.
What do we order?
I'm sorry?
What do we order on this?
Yes.
Falmouth was incorporated in 1686.
Yeah.
They're talking about the 1012 annual spring town meeting?
I'm sorry, what's, what did you?
It's a typo. 2012.
One decade.
Oh, I haven't, I haven't even looked at that. Okay. The last, the last item on the agenda, I mean, I mean, in the correspondence, is a copy of the spring town meeting, which I'm going to hand out to everybody.
This is the chairman. I'm just bringing this to the board, Stan. An article on the warrant for the town meeting in spring. It concerns the planning board, the Board of Appeals, and the District Commission, and I believe the Board of Selectmen. My sense is, eventually, you'll be asked to weigh in on it. I'm not asking you to weigh in on it tonight. I just want you to have it. My sense, it might be something you want to discuss with the Selectmen, perhaps, since you're at meeting, you know, it might be more tactical issue. But certainly, I would think you should be aware of it, and we'll give you, I say, I will give you my opinion on the matter at the appropriate time. But I want you to have it and to think about it, and to discuss it as board, perhaps, prior to town.
Who is bringing this article forward?
Selectmen.
The Selectmen?
Selectmen.
Okay.
Like every good, there's, there's goods and bads to it. I think the board needs to know the goods and the bads.
So, it doesn't, it doesn't allow zoning, zoning, so we don't have to hold a hearing on it?
No, you won't hold any hearing.
Right.
But it would be asking the town meeting to exempt us, the board, remember, if you miss a hearing. If you miss a hearing, you can come and read the record, and watch TV, bring yourself up to speed.
And still vote?
And still vote.
Okay.
You'd have to have a form to certify.
And, and there's, there's goods and bads to that idea. Certain boards that rely more on the record, it's okay, but I think the board, planning boards needs to discuss it, be informed, because you're asked, the town meeting, what do you think?
Okay. So everybody take a look at that, Jim?
Isn't there a state law that's already made this have to happen? Because I think I saw Conservation actually have people joining in remotely recently at a meeting.
Remote? No, I don't know anything about that.
Right.
I think there's a new change.
I'll look into that.
I, I, I watch the meetings every night, so.
That would almost be like...
I think there's a state law that mandates...
That would be almost close to voting by proxy. It would be close.
Well, let me, I'll look at that for you, but this is, this is, this is to allow, remember, let's say, Jim, we had a hearing on subdivision, and you missed the, you missed the first hearing. Just allow you to come into the office, read the paper, and watch what's going on, and still be eligible to vote. In the past, or as stands today, I should say, you missed a hearing, you're not eligible.
The only thing missing from that is that you don't get any questions at that hearing because you missed it. But, but, you know...
But you can be satisfied watching the film.
If you're satisfied in what you did here from everybody else, in terms, sure enough, you certified that the grab cracked, and then you vote.
The Community Preservation Committee adopted a policy where, when hearing the testimony from the applicants concerning their request for funding, that if any member of the CBC was not there, that they could, they could vote on it as long as they read the minutes and were briefed by the planning, I mean, the Community Preservation Planner. So we have that, it's not, it's not whether or not you miss a hearing or not, it's whether or not you hear the presentation by the, by the applicant. So it's a little different than that.
The major difference there is, when you're just deciding whether to make a discretionary allocation of public monies, it's not quite the same thing as when people are seeking a permit to use their private property.
I know that, yeah. Right. It's not, it's not exactly the same, but it approaches something similar to this being proposed here. Okay, let's see here. New business, anything that anyone wants brought up at a future meeting?
I already did it.
Sir?
I already did it.
You already did, yeah, right, okay, you did. Um, let's see, I believe that covers our agenda. I'll, can I turn the motion adjourned?
I move adjourned.
All opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Meeting's adjourned.